Joining us virtually, are they on with us yet?
Yes, they are.
Welcome, everyone, and thank you for taking time out of your very busy days to join us here in this workshop today with the Oshkosh Common Council and local stakeholders. Invited guests, if you'd like, please introduce yourselves as we go around the table and we'll get started.
John Casper, the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce.
Andy Levitt, UWO.
Michael Ford with the City of Oshkosh Common Council.
Deb Allison Osby, Oshkosh Common Council.
Doug Guerin, Public Health Director, Winnebago County.
Amy Albright, Oshkosh Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Mike Stanley, Fire Chief, City of Oshkosh.
Mark Roloff, Oshkosh City Manager.
Dean Smith, Oshkosh Chief of Police.
Pat Portell, President of the Oshkosh Winnebago Tavern League.
And Mayor Lori Palmieri. Looks like we have some other folks here with us, too. And who do we have with us online?
State Representative Gordon Hens.
Jason White, Greater Oshkosh.
Lindsay Erickson, Oshkosh Common Council.
Wilson Jones, Oshkosh Corporation.
Marie Jolly from Senator Dan Fine's office.
Is Deputy Mayor Krausley with us? All right. So today, we are getting together, I think, for the first time as a unique group in quite some time. We used to have joint legislative meetings, and we haven't had that for some time. I guess the government relations meetings, the chamber hosts and that. So here we are. Councilmember Paschal is joining us now. So the purpose of our workshop today is to discuss ways in which we can keep Oshkosh businesses open while reducing community spread, looking for your comments and perspectives as stakeholders in this. And, you know, we'll just get started right away here. And perhaps we'll start this way, Mr. Portell from the Tavern League, if you'd like to share, and then we can work our way around.
Well, we started out, oh, God, two months ago, we made all types of sanitizers, face masks available to all our members, basically at cost. Recently, we had a gentleman that wasn't really selling the items, but he made it available on Amazon. And what it is, it's a sprayer, an airless sprayer, that will spray a COVID-killing disinfectant, and it's been used in a lot of the factories in the Fox Valley. So as of yesterday, there was almost 20 small businesses, bars and restaurants, I know, they're using it in their five restaurants. So they'll spray once or twice a day, and hopefully that will take care of a lot of the issues in the bars and restaurants. I've had numerous conversations with the owners at different meetings, to be honest, to be truthful, and the minute they have an issue with an employee, any part of their staff, to contact me and obviously contact their employees. So last year, I think, or last week, we had nine businesses that were closed. And these are businesses now for seven months that have really been struggling. And if they don't get some more PPP money or something in the next three months with this snow falling, you're going to see a very large percentage of them close their doors. They're really struggling. But I will tell you, they realize there's a virus out there, and they're doing everything they can. I've never seen them so clean. But at the same time, if you drive down Main Street at nine o'clock at night, this place is a ghost town. So, you know, I've heard there's a few that have been really busy. I have not seen it. But again, I understand, talking to some of you council members, that you're worried about the pub crawl coming up, and I've heard nothing about that. But I will be more than happy to go talk to some of these people. I don't represent every class B license in town, and I'm sure it's just like when city staff goes home after a hard day's work, you can't control what they do at their home. So I think you've got to continue to educate. We do what we can, and all I can say is they're struggling.
Maybe we could skip down to Amy, since staff have a role later.
Hi. I guess I'm anxious to hear what everybody has to say. One of the things that I think we've been struggling with is how to push out some of the positive. I think that there's a lot of good things happening in Oshkosh, and a lot of businesses that have really tried to do the right thing. And I feel like that sometimes gets lost a little bit in people that maybe aren't, maybe following along. You know, when we talk about occupancy levels, I've talked to several businesses that would kill 450% occupancy. So limiting those, I don't know how that moves the needle. Another worry that I have is for places that may be extremely busy or not following. They're obviously not following the mandate or the recommendations now. So my worry would be putting more into place really does not move that needle either. So I think my question is, you know, how do we enforce any of this? Is any of it enforceable? I don't know. And I also think it's extremely unfair. I just heard a story this morning that made me just really sad. So somebody was going into the hotel to a local businesswoman, and the staff said, you know, you need to wear a mask because we have a mask mandate, and, you know, they have all the signage up, and this is a state mask mandate. And she kind of blew them off. And then she went into her meeting and said, you know, no one's going to tell me to wear a mask. And how can we put this on a 21-year-old young person working at the desk to enforce this? It's just, she's not going to win. And so, you know, we kind of get this shaming then of this back and forth. It's just been really toxic, you know, not just in Oshkosh. This is happening in every community. You know, there's people that are really on both sides of the fence on this thing. So I guess I would love if we could come up with something that, I don't know, was more of a carrot than a shame, or something to help businesses. You know, is there something we can do as a community to incentivize healthy things that are going on? Or, you know, how can we help versus trying to mandate more, I guess would be where I kind of fall on this.
Thank you. Chancellor Levitt?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. UW Oshkosh, we started bringing students back September 2nd. And we brought it back in a phased approach, because we have double occupancy in the residence halls. We have set up our Titans Return Plan, which allows us to do some modified teaching. Councilwoman Ford is a part of that, where we can teach face-to-face, we can teach in a hybrid fashion, or we can teach completely online. And the professors can switch between all three of those modes during the course of the instruction. Students, we've also set up our own testing center. We, working with Tommy Thompson, who's the interim president of the system, we were able to get the necessary funding to run our own testing center. We have actually, to date, have run over 8,000 COVID tests. The majority of those, of course, are antigen tests, and then we use the PCR tests in a confirming way, or when somebody has symptoms. But 8,000 tests. We have our own isolation residence hall on campus. We have a quarantine residence hall on campus, where once students are identified as positive, they are either given the option of going into the quarantine, excuse me, the isolation, or they can go home. And so about 50/50 or so, choose either one. We had a big spike a couple of weeks ago, and certainly it got everybody's attention. But since that time, because of the testing strategies, changes in the testing strategies, and I'd like to acknowledge Kurt Leibold and Kim Langoff are over from UWO, and they're the architects, if you will, of the plan that we have. Students were getting sick. There tend to be fairly mild cases when they do that. What we found out from the testing and also our own contact tracing capabilities is that students aren't necessarily being infected on campus. There isn't a single piece of evidence that we have found that a student has contracted COVID inside of a classroom. We've had very, very few faculty and staff infections. Again, none of them can be traced to the campus. We've had over 600, almost 700 students who have contracted COVID since September 2nd. And we believe that the majority of those students, the vast majority of those students, well, I should say the majority, contracted either off-campus, or they contracted it inside the residence halls themselves. We have, as a basis of how we are running the campus, masks are absolutely mandatory inside. We also encourage people to wear masks outside. So if you ever drive through campus, chances are you're going to see students and faculty and staff with their masks on. The fidelity, the compliance of that is very, very high, that the students are definitely wearing their masks when they're on campus. It's when they go into residence halls or they leave campus that the masks come off. So that's really sort of going to be part of the problem, and that's certainly on us, and that we are encouraging, or quite frankly, really dictating to students, we need you to wear your mask off-campus as well. It's where the students go. And there's house parties, though we've not been able to detect very, very large ones, though they still occur. And there are bars and restaurants. And so I would say, bars and restaurants of that group, we have some very responsible restaurant owners, and we have very responsible bar owners. And then there's some bar owners that are not quite as responsible. And so if you look at some of the bars that are immediately adjacent to the university, or just in very short walking distance, they can be packed. They can be packed on anywhere from a Thursday, a Friday, or a Saturday night. And they're packed with young people. So some of those young people are, of course, are UWO students, and some are not. So that's the problem that we're having, and I would say every Friday, I'm sending out a message to students, asking them, you know, think about what you're doing this weekend. We need you in the classroom, which means we better make sure you don't get sick. And so what we can, anything we can do to cut down on establishments that are really allowing way too many people in, completely unmasked, no social distancing, is something that would be very helpful to the university. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Casper?
Well, I really didn't prepare anything to discuss, but I will. I'll share. Since mid-March, we've been neck-deep into this thing. Every working hour of my time on, at the chamber, and it seems at home, has been consumed by COVID. Very early on, people didn't know what to do. The governor shut us down. Companies responded in a manner in which they should have, responded in a very responsible kind of way. We shared tons of information with people, because information was coming out daily, sometimes hourly, things were changing. So we were constantly moving information out to our members. We had to change drastically the way we operate, and a lot of companies had to change drastically the way they operated. We reached out to, we have some of the finest companies in the country, probably in the world. We have world-class organizations here. We reached out to them early and asked them to help us develop a set of best practices. What are companies doing to make sure that their employees are safe, customers are safe, and that sort of thing? We put that document together, shared that with our members several times, along with CDC guidelines, and bombarded people with those sorts of things. Very early on, our biggest issue was, when are we going to open back up? I mean, we had companies, small, large, that, it's kind of a mixed bag. I mean, some were doing well, some had, you know, good quarters, some were struggling, you know, people who, small business operators who invested their life and their dreams had been crushed. Businesses, business was lost. A lot of times, it's not like you can put your service or product, or your service on the shelf and sell it for a later date. Once that time is gone, it's gone. I mean, we had to talk people off the cliff, I don't know how many times, over the last, you know, early on, and over the last several months. You know, we took our small business revolving loan fund and changed it into a program where bars and restaurants, who are the most hardest hit in this whole thing, to give them small, not grants, but loans, to help them through what we thought was initially, you know, would be a couple of weeks, then it became four weeks, and it became six weeks, and on and on and on. Finally, we were able to operate, but the market was put in a position where it didn't quite understand what, how dangerous it was out there. But I think the media did a great job in making sure people were concerned, people were adequately scared, so they didn't respond. The market has not come back to the point where it should be, we're not anywhere near pre-COVID sales levels for customer counts and that sort of thing. And again, bars and restaurants are the hardest hit on that. You know, we have, I think, over the last several months, I've sold almost 30,000 masks like this. So if anybody wants some, I still got a few thousand in the office. Also, the K95s, N95s, I have, too. I think we sold about 170 gallons of disinfectant, sanitizer for folks. So we did a lot of those sorts of things. Again, you know, we advocated hard, and will continue to advocate very, very hard, to make sure that, you know, businesses remain open, because they need to remain open. You know, this is, we're all in kind of a similar storm, but all of our boats are different. While, you know, individuals, you know, are concerned about health and health risks associated with this, businesses have that for themselves, their families, for their employees. But they also have the concern about the investment that they made in their business and losing that investment. I mean, there are companies, and there are individuals that have lost, and will lose, and will not come back. And I'm very, very concerned about things that may go on in this community that will create additional barriers to folks doing business. At this point, you know, we need to be looking at ways that we can help business and help individuals continue to move down their path of realizing their dreams and not losing investment that they made in their companies. So I think with that, I'll stop.
I think that Jason White is with us. Jason, for Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation. Jason?
All right. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, very good. Sorry. I frequently turn the talk without my mic on. All right, so a couple of things. So...
Jason?
Yes?
We've got some background feedback there.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Try to speak up if you can.
All right, thank you. All right, I put my papers down, so that might help. All right, so a couple of things. I agree, like both others that have spoken so far. You know, back in March, know really what to expect. We didn't know if this was a 30, 60, 90, 100, maybe, issue for our community. Obviously, it's gotten a lot longer than that. Real quick, we first suspected that this pandemic could run a longer course than anticipated. We worked, obviously, with the city and in the county, and we host two loan funds out of our office. One is the Greater Oshkosh Emergency Response Fund, the other is Winnebago County Rapid Recovery Loan. The Greater Oshkosh Emergency Response Fund, which includes funds from the program, and also from a couple of tip districts around the city, has received 19 publications, 18 awards. The grant was invited to return with, we had four or five incremental increments, got to submit, $175,000, and we have $875,000 remaining. The county fund, I'll just talk relevant to the city, a total of $70,000 made to Oshkosh-based companies, and there's $230,000 still left for our company. So while we saw a lot of demand for these programs at the beginning, we don't see much demand right now, and there's a lot of fear for that. But certainly, there's still a lot of money available in $3,000 increments for Oshkosh-based companies. You know, it's talked about in terms of what's good and what's different. And, you know, I think that business can be harmed in a couple of different ways by what happens during the pandemic. One is, already been identified is when, you know, the economy shuts down, businesses get ordered to close, there's a huge financial impact for that business. But then the other flip side is, as long as we continue to have rising COVID case, without more people getting sick, that means our businesses have more employees getting sick and not coming to work, or COVID-positive spreading even further. I think that is a part of this. I think that deserves more attention, because longer we don't reduce the number of cases, the longer that occurs, the worse it's going to be for businesses in our community. I mentioned, I sent a link out earlier, Be Safe, Johnson. There's a number of different regional coalition partners that are part of that. I would like to encourage everybody on that's part of this to be a part of that coalition. Good business, nonprofit, and partners that are part of that, including this. And the other thing, too, is, you know, I would be interested in continuing to get more from health experts in terms of where the spread is coming from. Because, you know, our community is ranked pretty high nationally, a lot of good ranking. We spent in the top one or top three in the country in terms of the growing new cases in the United States among communities for COVID-19. So I'd like to know more, because, you know, the university has taken some criticism. I don't think the university is solely responsible. I don't think our bars are solely responsible. I don't think our prison is solely responsible. But certainly, it's a shared effort. And I would like to hear more about the trace and where these cases are coming from, and how we can stop that. Technically, with the virus, I've heard that we don't want to fear COVID-19. I agree with that. It's good for our, have urgency to reduce the number of cases. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. I have to admit, I could only catch part of that. The audio wasn't very clear. But I believe the essence is that there are still funds available through GOADC, out of the million dollars collectively provided, that only about 175,000 has been utilized. And thank you for joining us. And then, I'm sorry, who else do we have joining us online? I know Councilmember Erickson, but Mr. Wilson, did you wish to share?
Can you hear me, Mayor?
A little louder, please.
Okay. How about now? Is that better?
Can we turn, like, a fan off or something that's got the background noise? Maybe we can hear him a little better. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Well, thank you for allowing me to speak, Mayor, and appreciate everyone's interest in looking into this critical issue. You know, for us, Mayor, you and I had a conversation about this several months ago. We learned a lot from our facility in China, and that protocol, those processes we put through our European facilities and now in the U.S., and it had pretty good success. I know our health department officials came through and reviewed some of the things we were doing, and I think they agreed that we were doing what we could. Not really wanting to tout what we're doing, but more that we're concerned about our community. Where we've had success is where we've appealed to our teams to do the right thing, to wear a mask, to socially distance. If you're sick, don't come to work. Get medical attention. And I say all that, and also concerned about our small businesses in this area. You know, lives are the number one priority, but our small business friends got to have livelihood, too. So, you know, we're in support of the right thing to do for the community. We wanted to just go on record and say we're concerned, especially for our small business friends. When we look at the nine states that we work in in the U.S., all of them pushed open. All of them have, at the record, than we do. And so I think there's more to understand. I think hearing Chancellor Levitt, I think our problem areas seem to be, I'm afraid, that are a little less, I guess, a little more open to taking the risk, that are hurting our community. But it is kind of puzzling. I'm on the board of the Green Bay Packers, too. And so we're studying the infection rates in Brown County, and we are the worst in the NFL. We were hoping to try to open up in November for a small group, but that's not going to be possible. I don't think it is. We'll have to see how things go. But my point being is, there is more analysis needed, I think, and what we need to be careful is overreaching and maybe mandating things that, quite honestly, I don't even know if we can afford. So I wish I had something really profound to say here, but other than just want you to know that, you know, we've got, in this community, we've probably got close to 10,000 people that are connected to our government. And I know there's a general concern for what's going on. More about, especially now with schools, you got a lot of single parents that are having homeschool, and what's that going to do to employment going forward. So just appreciate talking to participate and hear what the others are thinking here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I believe we also have John Newman online with us from Aurora Medical Center. Oh, he's here in person.
So is it okay to sit up here? Good afternoon, everybody. Mostly, I just wanted to be here as a resource if there's questions to say, hey, what's really happening? I would tell you, what we understand about this particular disease, COVID, we're not in the same spot we were in March. We can diagnose it, we know where it's at, we can find it. I think from the health system, we are in a much better spot in responding to it, because we know what works, and quite honestly, we figured out a lot of what doesn't work. There is something that changed about eight weeks ago, as far as the virulence of this disease. Back in March, we were filling up our intensive care units and our ventilators, and people were sick and really dying at a very quick rate. Now, we have changed a little bit in how we care for this disease, but we're also seeing a different virulence of this disease. And there's a lot of theories that are bouncing back and forth among, why is this different? Is this a virus mutating? And when we look at the genetics of the virus, it does not appear that that's the case. And so most recently, there's a theory that's being proposed, and I must admit, it's being argued fairly vehemently in healthcare about the benefit of wearing a mask. And wearing a mask is that it actually decreases the amount of virus that I get if I'm exposed to COVID. And if having a decrease of that amount of virus fundamentally changes how I respond to that virus. And so we certainly know with animals that we're doing vaccine tests on, that there is a lethal dose of this vaccine, that if I give them this much, they will die. We also know that if we give them the vaccine, and they're, and they don't die, that there's an effectiveness of that vaccine. So the theory is... So the theory is if there's a lethal dose, then something less than a lethal dose may actually give us a different variance of this disease. And about eight weeks ago, there seemed to be a significant amount of people masking in acceptance of let's wear this mask, and the theory is being proposed that the mask is decreasing that dose and subsequently giving us a different disease we're seeing in the hospitals. So I will tell you the hospitals right now, and I talk to them every day with Theta Care, Ascension, Aurora, because this is not, you know, anybody's singular problem, this is a very much of a collective problem. And certainly it's from the systems that can span outside of the Fox Cities, those are the places that we can go to ask for help. And we are seeing people that are coming into the hospitals that are sick with COVID, which is different than what we saw in March than people that were coming and dying of COVID. And so that's a good thing. And so one, probably the most important thing I can say is if that was from hand washing, social distancing, and masking, and that's what's affected, what we're seeing on the backend, thank you, because it's a lot easier to manage that patient population than the people that come in and need to be put on ventilators. We are running out of space currently in our hospitals. When I say that, I say that with realizing that we have the capacity to create some of our own space. And so we are still doing elective procedures, meaning those are the procedures that we didn't do in March, we shut it all down. And so in March, I had talent from the operating room, and I had space in an operating pre-op post area that I could use for healthcare delivery if I needed. But now, when we realized that shutting down, just like the shutting down industry, shutting down the health system was not the best thing for everybody who's still trying to engage with their healthcare. And so we are going to pay a tax on all of those preventive cares that we didn't deliver from March until current times. And so we are trying to catch up on those, whether it be colonoscopies, mammograms, vaccinations, or just management of chronic disease. And so we are desperately trying to keep those operations going while we still take care of COVID. And so as part of advocacy for our health, I have the benefit of having other hospitals north of me and south of me that if I fill up, I can use them as a relief valve. I still got to get people to these hospitals, and to figure out how we're going to transport people in and out of these hospitals when they fill up is still an issue we're still trying to run by. So I would say that I'm here as a resource. Mayor, if you guys have questions, folks that know me, I'm pretty candid, I'll answer as honestly as possible. I do fundamentally believe that the utilization of masks has helped us and given us much of a decreased virulence to this disease, and it makes some science sense, but I will fully admit that we're still arguing it amongst ourselves, and perhaps always will be. But I wanted to say thank you, but also wanted to say there is reason for concern that any time that we are to the point where we need to consider shutting down the elective surgeries, that we would do that, shutting down the preventative medicine, we would do that, and we are just about there.
Thank you for that. I have been informed that a very recent press release and press conference is taking place in which Governor Evers' office, Secretary Palm, has issued a statewide order that limits indoor capacity to twenty-five percent, limits public gatherings at indoor twenty-five percent. There are some exceptions, First Amendment, impersonating, religious, and that is connected with a hundred million dollars, CARES Act funding to assist businesses. It is the floor, it does not prevent more restrictive measures at the local level if necessary. I'm sure all of you will want to catch up on that.
Madam Mayor, does it say when that takes effect?
I do not have the specifics, it's just now coming up. Mr. Ola?
And I'm only taking this from the media. The directive goes into effect at 8:00 a.m. on Thursday, October 8th, and will remain in effect until Friday, November 6th.
Twenty-five percent of all businesses?
All it says is public gatherings to no more than twenty-five percent of a room or building's total occupancy. And I assume that probably means the fire limits that are in place for buildings. So all these buildings have a number on the little wall, that's twenty-five percent of that number.
And in a specific message from the Restaurant Association, they just sent out an urgent message saying that it obviously includes restaurants and bars statewide.
So I'm reading Madison News, and the order, under the order effective Thursday at 8:00 a.m., indoor public gatherings and more than twenty-five percent of a room or building's total occupancy are banned and includes gatherings at stores, restaurants, bars, or other businesses that allow members of the public to enter. The order doesn't shut down businesses or govern outdoor spaces that businesses have. It also doesn't apply to schools, governmental spaces, offices, manufacturing plants, and other facilities only accessible by employees, nor is it enforceable for any events where protected speech is occurring, such as indoor political rallies, protests, or religious gatherings.
Thank you. So I guess while that sinks in and we chew on that piece, public health is here, Doug Geren, about what can be done to slow community spread. I know that's not a lot of time for you to react to, Mr. Geren, but I think we should proceed with this conversation, it just may take a different path.
Indeed, it may. Thank you for calling the meeting, and thank you, everyone, for coming together around this issue. It's clear that we're in a crisis, and that crisis is getting worse. What we've put into place so far has not been effective. Our behaviors at this current time, you know, as a community and as a state, continue to exacerbate the situation. You know that we're one of the worst in the country now, and we are in the worst part of the state, of one of the worst states in the country. So continuing on our current path is likely to render more of the same. And so I do urge you all to, you know, bring forth, you know, your suggestions. We certainly know that there's a number of measures that do work. Certainly masking works, it's undoubtable, it's undeniable, you know, scientific evidence now that's in place that masks do help, but they need to be worn by the majority of the population. And we're just not seeing enough mask-wearing and distancing to render it as effective as it could be. It's definitely helping, but it's not as effective as it could be. Masks are not a substitute for physical distancing, and I think we find that also happens. And we have, you know, far too many gatherings of groups of individuals that are transmitting virus. You know, when I talk with our disease investigators and contact tracers, you know, it's very clear that, you know, gatherings, you know, at establishments and gatherings at home are really causing a lot of transmission of this disease. Persons that become infected at these events, bring it home, infect their family members, and then those family members go and infect their workplaces and other places that they go to. So, you know, we really have not done a sufficient job of limiting spread to contain the current situation, and we'll expect more to continue. I mean, this is obviously having, you know, tremendous impacts on our community. It's caused the closings of schools, it's overwhelming our hospitals, it's closing businesses. And the long-term toll of not responding to that in an aggressive manner will just render this situation to go on for months and months, which certainly could prove to be far more devastating to our economy and our businesses than putting some stronger measures in place in the short term to really knock things down. The governor's order today will attempt to address that. I think, you know, we as a community need to decide how we want to, and look at how we're going to enforce that. I think the comments prior to this about mask-wearing and distancing were good, and I think it's very clear that, you know, without some sort of a mandate that's actually enforceable, we're not going to progress forward and reduce the burden of disease in this community. So I'm sure that's, you know, what the state's looking at in terms of that. We are seeing more movement forward in other communities in terms of additional regulations that is being contested. But frankly, you know, we've got to fight the virus, we're fighting each other. And, you know, we really need to come together and find ways that we can work together. We certainly need some economic solutions that help those that are most impacted by this. You know, CARES funding probably won't be enough, but certainly some creative solutions for helping those businesses that are harmed the most by limiting occupancies, by requiring physical distancing are certainly in order. We can't wait for the financial incentives to be in place prior to taking those steps to reduce disease in our community now. You know, we have, we have reached, when you look at the hospitalizations, we are on just an incredible trajectory of the increase in cases that's not likely to slow down soon. And the sooner we act on that, the faster this will stop, or at least slow down. And hopefully we can, you know, not challenge the infrastructure like we have now. It would be certainly, it'd be certainly great if we could slow this down enough that we can open schools back up again and help assure that our hospitals aren't going to be overloaded, because we're certainly there now. The, I think what the governor has proposed today is a step towards, you know, putting into place some reasonable measures that will help, although I think as a community, we really certainly need to discuss, you know, how that'll be implemented and really how it will be enforced. The enforcement part, or the mandate part, or the penalty part of masking, physical distancing, occupancy permits is really the key to having enough participation in those activities that we're going to see a meaningful decline in cases. So look forward to continuing to work with you and keep you apprised of the situation as we move forward. But, you know, we really, really, it's really time for us to pull together and actually put some restrictions in place that are enforced and that people will follow to ensure that they're successful. We are wasting an incredible amount of money and resource doing what we're doing right now for no gain. So let's do what we can to make sure those resources that we're putting out now are actually resulting in some positive improvement in our community.
Very sobering. So Dr. Newman or Mr. Geren, what about the medical community? I guess can we emphasize any more clearly why control of community spread is important? And I guess to be semantically splitting hairs here, uncontrolled community spread. You know, going back to the capacity discussion, so I think Friday, Dr. Raymond from the Wisconsin Medical College, you know, made the statement that in this part of the state, they feel like they can handle the surge in the southeastern part of the state because they have more resources, they have more ventilators, they have more staff. But the concern was expressed for the rural part of the state, and I guess we might not be rural, and we might not be urban, we're kind of Reuben, but is that capacity at a point where someone coming in on an overdose or a stroke may have to wait because these resources are constrained? Is that an overstatement?
Absolutely not. And I think if somebody comes in right now and your hospital's full, somebody comes in with a stroke, you're transferring them. And so then with stroke, time is tissue, and that's time in an ambulance or a helicopter where you're going to get help to try and reperfuse that. That's lost tissue you're not getting back. And so that's exactly the scenario we're trying to avoid. And so if we fill the hospitals, you can't take somebody who's sick in a hospital and then say, hey, I'm going to kick you out, send you somewhere else, or I bring somebody else in. It's just, it may be one way to do it, it's just not the way that we fundamentally done it. Say, this is emergency room, this is emergent need we need to address, and we're sending them somewhere else.
Yes, Mr. Geren?
Just to add to that, I mean, over the past few weeks, the number of outbreaks that we've had in group facilities, long-term care facilities, the number of healthcare workers that have been infected has grown up tremendously. We're not only filling our hospitals, but we're also infecting our healthcare workers that we need in order to meet the higher demands. You know, the prison's another example. The more uncontrolled spread we have in our community, the more people unknowingly show up for work and create an infection. You know, we just have, we just, you know, last week, we've identified over three hundred cases in the Ashkosh Correctional Institute. Those are brought in by people that work there, not by people that are in there, and we're seeing that in all of our settings.
I'm sorry, that was over three hundred last week?
Over three hundred have been identified. This is part of, you know, this is part of some routine testing. There's only been one outbreak larger in the state so far in an inmate population. And so, I mean, they are obviously actively dealing with that, but it's just, it's a very good example of how, when we have uncontrolled spread in our community, that we infect our workers that infect our vulnerable populations. Our nursing homes, our assisted living facilities, our hospitals, and now our correctional institutions.
I would like to give a little bit of comfort in the sense that I don't think we're infecting people in the hospitals who are wearing PPE. So I don't think our nurses are getting infected from COVID-positive patients, and we talked to everybody, Doug talks to all of them, the stories are traditionally the same even with our own employees. It's like I was at a wedding last week, or I went to a funeral last week, or I was at a family gathering last week. So we have identified, and they know that somebody who is COVID-positive there, and that's where they got exposed, and they weren't wearing their protective posture. We have not been able to find anybody who has either transmitted from the healthcare to a patient or from a patient to healthcare, so we truly think that we're getting confident in what we're doing with our personal protective gear. But the reality is we're losing our staff, Theta's losing our staff, Ascension's losing our staff, all of the industries are losing their staff from other exposures that we probably should have questioned and probably should have said, how can we not maybe attend that wedding, or that funeral, or that party, or that family get-together, or that meal? I mean, that's the story, it's consistent. And you're sympathized because you, you know, you want to go to those things, but you also say, and now you know what it costs you to do that.
I don't want to, I guess, go to some kind of inductive leap, but, you know, the question's been asked, are we doing so well with testing now over what we were in the spring that perhaps we haven't been clear in the messaging about the timing of when you get the test, such that folks who, perhaps before five days, don't have enough viral load, but they're going in for the test, and they're getting a false negative? Is that a piece of this? Mr. Geren?
With testing, we still don't have enough. There are certainly people that probably go to the testing sites since there aren't, there isn't screening in place for that, that may test too early. But our percent positive numbers continue to go up, meaning that a higher percentage, you know, every week are positive that go to get tested. That certainly tells us that there's an expansion of the virus within our community, and also we don't have enough testing to keep up. So there are many our community. And also, we don't have enough testing to keep up. So there are many, many that haven't been tested or have been deferred from testing. They just haven't had the opportunity to get tested, or just to select, just decide not to because of the consequences of going into quarantine or isolation. So, testing is still inadequate, but it is still a pretty reliable indicator for us about what's happening in the community as well as the rates of hospitalization. So, we are still in an expansion. I just checked with our environmental health staff, you know, on the, on the business side of things. We don't have an official list of businesses that closed, but in the last two weeks, they know of at least 11 businesses in Oshkosh alone that have closed due to COVID.
I guess I'd like to just backtrack a little bit here. So each of you who've come today have shared kind of what the problem statement is from your perspective and what you're doing. What I'm wondering is, do any of you see other options for us as a community to add to what we're doing? I mean, we all may feel like we're doing, we're being successful in the measures we're taking, but clearly, we're not where we need to be. So I guess I'd just like to open it back up to those folks. Councilmember Allison Osby?
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess one of the questions I would have-
Can you, can you speak up into your mic?
My apologies. So a question I'd have is, Mr. Garen and I had a real nice conversation just prior to the meeting, you know, because there's been a lot of talk about testing here in Winnebago County and the long wait times and things like that, you know. And he had some really insightful and good information, which I think is both positive and negative. You know, obviously, they're doing a lot of testing, but one of the things which I think is important to note, and certainly Doug, if you can, and say this better than I am, you know, yes, we have three and four hour wait times, but they're testing, not only, but in relative terms, 40 to 50% are actually from Winnebago County. There's a percentage that's coming from Outagamy. And Mr. Garen informed that there's also people that are sometimes traveling two hours to get here. So we've got 50 to 60% of those that are taking up the testing facility here in Winnebago County that don't live in Winnebago County. So I guess my question would be, Mayor, is can we put pressure on our local representatives to put more pressure on Andrea Palm and the state to open up more testing centers to take off some of the pressure that, you know, Mr. Garen's staff has been under for a number of months? And, and somehow more regionalize that type of thing so that for our people that do want to get tested, they're not waiting three and four hours? Because I've heard a number of people that say, I don't have that kind of time, especially if there's a single parent. So that would be, I guess, a suggestion or a solution is can our state local representatives advocate for us, for the state to open up others in other areas?
And yes, I'm also understanding that even with that, the 50% that's coming in through Winnebago County, that we still can't keep up with the contact tracing even with that bottleneck, if you will, in terms of the testing site. So it sounds like there's a combination going on. But I guess I just wanted to kind of maybe hear back from, from our guests here as to, you know, what other creative thoughts they might have in terms of, you know, trying to get this under control.
I just wanted to say that I do think there is information overload. I think we all feel like we're pushing out as much information as we can. And I can guarantee you, people are not reading it. They are, they are tuning this out. It is too much. You cannot go to a doctor appointment and expect to get 20 handouts, and then get 20 handouts from the school, and then 20 handouts from the county, and expect people to understand this. They, they're tuning out. And this has been seven months of this. I mean, people, you know, we hear about the fatigue of this and all of that. So one thing in my head, I think, is how can we simplify this for people? Is there a way that we all can share the same message? If we are all Winnebago County, why does everybody have to have a separate flyer? And why can't there be a, a separate thing? People are hearing so many different, I mean, if you talk to anybody who's been diagnosed or positive or negative, they all have a different, like, oh, well, I only have to quarantine for 10 days. No, I have to quarantine for 14 days. No, I, I mean, people don't, they're hearing different things, even from the school, or from the hospital, or from the, and I think it's just, it's overload. So that would be my first recommendation, is if somehow Winnebago County could get on board with some sort of message that we all share that's common. And Jason was sort of talking about that on the call with the Wisconsin Promise, or whatever that is. There's, there's a bunch of them. It doesn't really matter what it is. It's just, how do we simplify this to make, make it easier for people, A. And then, I think, I have one other point about this, but I'm losing it right now. But the bottom line is, I just, I think people are in overload with it. I really, I really do. And I think if we can somehow figure that out for people, I think that would be a win. My other thought was, lots of communities are doing press conferences, and I don't know that Winnebago County has done that. And hearing from Dr. Newman and hearing from, is very different than a widget on Facebook or a, and if we're in such a dire need, why are we not talking to our people about what's happening? I mean, people, people are ultimately good. People want to do the right thing. I believe that people don't understand what's going on, and they're questioning the numbers because they don't know. And they see the numbers, and what does this mean? And I feel more comforted even hearing bad news. I can understand it. I understand what the bad news is, and I can, I can process that. I, I feel we've got to talk to our people, and it's not through, so I think there's two things. It's like, simplify the messaging and talk to our people. That's, that's what I would say.
Thanks for that. Mr. Casper?
Well, I must be on a different planet. I think people know what's going on. They, they are heeding to warnings. They get it. Everybody knows you should wear a mask, you should wash your hands, you should have social distance. I think it's been pounded into our brains umpteen times. I don't think any more messaging on that is going to, is going to matter. I think the point is, people, people aren't afraid of this. 99.98% of people look at this and say, I don't have anything to worry about. I'm not going to be that fatality. I'm healthy, I'm, I'm whatever. So they're going to go out and they're going to do what people do. They're social animals. They go to weddings, they go to funerals, they go to parties, they do all those things. They're going to do those things. And it always comes back to the businessman not doing the right thing. I mean, I get out a little bit, okay? I see people wearing masks. Most times when I'm out, people are wearing masks. And if I'm worried about somebody coughing away in a corner not wearing a mask, I walk away from them. If, if an individual goes to someplace and they don't think they're, it's comfortable or safe, they have a choice. Don't go in. You know, we're trying to legislate people's behaviors. People need to take responsibility for themselves. I think they get it. And unfortunately, things happen. Things happen. And we're at that point. And, you know, I know the county would like to shut people down. I think that'd be the worst thing that we could do. This economy would be in dire, dire straits. I mean, companies had to furlough people, had to lay off people, people took pay cuts. Everybody's been taking, taking it pretty tough. So I mean, you know.
So what do you think could be done short of those items?
Short of what?
So what do you think could be done short of those items that are concerning?
I think we're doing everything that needs to be done. I mean, I don't know. I haven't seen anything invented in any state, any community that, that, that anybody's doing anything different than we're doing.
Mr. Ford?
Is it time for our comments yet on the agenda?
Yeah, I, I guess I only wanted to ask one more thing from Mr., from Chancellor Levitt.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly add that we have been enjoying recent success. And our situation is a little different than, say, the entire city or the county. It's, to us, it's about testing. And as Mr. Garen had talked about, and a lot of testing. So it's not unusual if somebody tests, a couple of people test positive on the sixth floor of Scott Hall, we ask the entire floor to come in and get tested. And they comply. They come in and they get tested, and then we end up taking six of those students out and put them in isolation. So it's testing, quarantine, isolation, and then in the end, it's also enforcement, enforcement. And we do have the ability to enforce these policies on our students through the student code of conduct. So we have a process that's going on right now in order to do that. So, the students have been terrific in the sense that they've been very compliant about the masks and also coming in for testing. We have no trouble with students coming for their appointments, which is amazing. So, I know that's a little different than what we're dealing with out here in the community, but we do got, we have to figure out how to test more.
Pat?
Yeah, I knew I wouldn't be real popular in this room today, but you, you need to look at the numbers. I mean, typically, the bar restaurant business, they, they have about 28% of the on-premise business. I've talked to the liquor distributors, beer distributors, and right now, they're down about 7%. They said that they've had increases up to 300% with the liquor stores doing carryout. So people are drinking in their homes, like you said, in their dorms and stuff. Is there a rogue bar out there that's not paying attention? I don't doubt that. And I told the chief, I'll be happy to go talk to him. But it doesn't mean that they're going to pay attention anyways. But so much of this drinking is being done off-premise in people's homes. There's parties. We had a wedding just two doors away from my house. There had to be 150 people. I never saw a mask. And I, I can understand where they, they wanted their daughter to get married. That, that's fine. But we have been taking the majority of the blame since March 17th, when we were given an hour to tell people to close up. And it was just a, a total mess. And kudos to the chief, because we worked together and gave him a couple hours to get, at least get closed up. But, you know, all I hear about, especially on the internet, is it's the bars and restaurants. And I think we have to open up our minds. There's a lot of events going on that don't include bars or restaurants, because they're hurting so bad, it's not even funny. And you've literally put the death, or the governor's put the, the death into some of these larger bars and restaurants now, because you can't operate on 25%. You can't. There's just no way. And I don't know who's going to enforce it. That's not my issue. But I just want to put it out there that these people, I've heard stories of taking loans out on their houses so that they can keep their restaurant open. They've lost their kids' college education. These people are losing everything. And we sit back and go, two weeks, 30 days, this will work, that'll work. I mean, if you have to, and I've said publicly, shut down the whole city. Now, good luck with Walmart and Menards and Truck and what have you. But if that's the only way that you're claiming is going to solve this problem, then do it. But I am so sick and tired of hearing the bars and restaurants are, are killing people because I've never seen them cleaner. And I spent 40 years in this business. I know it pretty well. And yet, everything you hear is this and that and everything. It changes weekly. I mean, Fauci said that if you spend 10 seconds with somebody, they can get sick. Now they're spending four hours in a bar. And, and, you know, there's just so much BS out there, guys. I mean, let's get rid of this thing. I agree 100%, but we've really taken a lot of negativism. And I'll tell you what, you have one of the best operators in, in the state right here with Jay Sukle and his group. And he doesn't know what he's going to do to his, his places when the snow falls. And I, I just hope you guys keep an open mind. And I'm not trying to put money over matter, but it, it's just not good out there. And let's look at the big picture. But I'm just really getting tired of getting 99.9% of the blame. And, and we just seem to be publicly listed all the time. And yet, even though I was honest with the chief and some council members about big box stores having 20-plus people that were sent home with the flu, they never mentioned the name COVID. But I've told my operators to be honest and go out there and let people know that you guys have positive cases. So I'm just amazed that there isn't another small business that has publicly admitted that they had a positive case. So, again, I'm not saying that we don't deserve some of the, the issue, but we don't deserve 99%.
So I think if I, if I heard you correctly, then you're saying you're offering that if something stringent needed to be done, it needed to be applied across the board, across all the businesses. And it sounds like the state is making that attempt today with their announcement.
I don't think money should come into play. I mean, if somebody's sick and affecting your business, you need to deal with it. But bigger businesses are getting away with stuff that smaller businesses can't.
I think Pat's saying you can't dump it on businesses' back all the time. Businesses cannot always be the savior for everybody, taking account, personal accountability for themselves. And that's, that's, I've seen, companies are doing what they need to do. They're out there, they're making sure their employees are safe, they're making sure their customers are safe. If their customers feel like they're getting a good experience, they're going to come back. But people, people have to take accountability for their actions, and that's not happening. You can't legislate that and mandate that on the back of a business.
Uh, Councilmember Ford?
Are we in the-
Yes, we're into, we're into sharing what elected officials are hearing from community.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So, early in this, and all of you will recall, the council passed a resolution calling for a safe and fair reopening of the Oshkosh economy based on local conditions. Right now, local conditions are not good. We are at the top of the COVID list. We're there for the second week in a row. These are objective, subjective, objective facts, excuse me. Everything we've done to this point, whether our intent was good or bad, got us to where we are. So what are we going to do about it? We're not the governor, we're not Dr. Fauci. I'm not here to give you medical advice. I'm not here to tell you that you should shut down your business. That was never on the table. That should not be on the table. That's a draconian measure. What we can do is solve the human problem. First off, we can stop playing the blame game. I personally, I can't speak for all of my colleagues here, but I could care less what anybody said or did yesterday. That's gone. Focused on tomorrow. There's a role for all of us in a cooperative community response to COVID. We pushed for this meeting to give everyone here a chance to step up, be part of the solution. Inaction's really not a viable option, given where we are at. If your preferred course of action is inaction, I would prefer personally that you step aside, allow people that are willing to work cooperatively to step up to the table, because there is enough of us in this community that want to do that. I think we can do that. None of us have the answers here. There is no magic bullet to this. But there are things we can do to make progress possible. One thing I think we can do is address the current role ambiguity, right? There is a lot of information. People aren't sure where the city's responsibility starts, where it stops. We're not sure where the county stops and starts. We don't know what the county's in favor of. We talk about regulations. Well, specifically, what do we mean by that? We have to get that out there. We have to understand what the institutional response is going to be from UWO, OASD. We have to understand what the business response is. And I don't want to get angry, but quite frankly, doing nothing is not, not viable. And I, I, I'm sitting here looking at a list of all the members of the Chamber of the Tavern League, and I just cannot believe that that's truly where we're all at right now. But if that is, we're screwed, right? Again, sorry to get angry here, but if that's where we're at, the business community who needs to be on board with a viable response is just against doing anything, then we've lost. We've lost. And I don't think that's where we need to be. And personally, again, I'm all for moving forward with those that are willing to move forward. We can fill the structural leadership void by creating some type of structure where we have a single point of contact for information flows. We have a single point of contact that can put out best practices via COVID, a place where businesses and individuals can go to get accurate information, to get at some of that confusion. We can combat misinformation using some of the techniques that Representative or Councilmember Allison Osby was all over earlier in this process, a PR campaign, someplace where we can articulate roles for everybody, something that's positive. I agree, we need to avoid mandates. That was never on the table. Now, I have thoughts on how to do this. I shared some of these our last council meeting. I've shared some of these personally with people. And happy to have that conversation later. But I think for now, we just need to agree that we need to have a cooperative effort, and it doesn't work unless we're all here at the table. So thank you.
If I could, ask Chief Stanley, maybe city manager wants to weigh in on this. Back at our March 18th city council meeting, where the plan was laid out, obviously, a number of things have changed. If you could know then what you know now, based on our experiences, you know, we, we did institute the joint incident, information distribution, the city was monitoring things closely, the communication was taking place back and forth with the county. What would you do differently, or what could we do differently, like, starting tomorrow than what we already have in place under our emergency order?
Yeah, obviously, that's a very challenging question. You know, and I, I know that in the media and in society, the term unprecedented times has been overused and to the point of- has been overused and to the point it's cliche. But what I think everybody in this room, everybody in our community, and everybody in the world needs to realize is that never in the history of mankind have we responded to a pandemic like this. We did not have the information. We didn't have the technology. We haven't had, we have more travel now, where we're truly a global community. You know, and everyone is frustrated, you know, and I feel that, and I think everybody in this room does, everybody in the world does, of, you know, the comment was made about it's confusing information. Yeah, the experts can't agree. You know, Dr. Newman, very eloquent, we talked about that, of, you know, the medical community is debating it internally, you know, that we're debating it, you know, in our break rooms, in our businesses, and at the tables in our restaurants, and at the counters at the bar, of what is good information? You know, one of the things that I've stressed throughout this emergency is, you know, we have to all understand that we're all making this up as we go. Because we don't know enough about the disease and the disease process and transmission and treatments and recovery rates and vaccinations. You know, so at the time in March, you know, and even into late February, you know, with what the information we knew at that time was, you know, I told the city manager, I'm not worried about COVID at all. You know, based on the information we had about it and, you know, what we knew, I said, nah, this is going to be nothing. You know, this is going to be like the Ebola scare and the avian flu scare and, well, you know, I've eaten those words many times over. You know, so what could we do differently? You know, what would we have done differently in retrospect? You know, I don't know that we would have done much differently. Because, you know, we've been incredibly responsive, and our mantra as a city has been, we're going to get ahead, stay ahead. And I think we did a phenomenal job of that. The numbers that we're seeing now, you know, we feared were going to happen in April. And we've delayed that a great deal, you know, which has been fantastic, but you know, now we're starting to lose. And, you know, there's a lot of mitigating factors around that of, you know, it's a different virus, like Dr. Newman was talking about, you know, we're seeing different effects and impacts on the community, and, you know, nobody was in school in July, and they are now. And, you know, so I don't know that we failed, but we're losing. You know, and I am very sympathetic, incredibly sympathetic, to the concerns of the business owners and, you know, I'm not looking to pass blame on it's the bar's fault, it's the tavern's fault, it's, you know, people's fault. But I mean, I concur with a lot of the statements that have been made here. The numbers don't lie. I mean, the numbers are trending dramatically upwards. You know, we're seeing rapid community spread. You know, we are seeing it impact services, employers, you know, ability to conduct normal business operations, whether that's for a nonprofit government entity or a for-profit entity. And, you know, we are starting to tax the healthcare system. We are seeing spread in employee groups that are going to limit businesses or, again, nonprofit government operations to function. You know, so I agree very strongly with Councilmember Ford that we need to move forward. We need to look for solutions. You know, the numbers we have now, you know, you watch the mainstream media, it's schools' faults, it's the prisons' fault, it's the bars' fault, it's, you know, it's the, you know, people being irresponsible's fault. That's not productive conversation. We know the numbers are through the roof. You know, we know that we lead the nation as the hotspot. You know, and I don't think that's a claim to fame for any of us. You know, that's, what will that impact have? Which is worse, will a million people die? Well, they haven't so far in this state. You know, so is it worse to blight the economy? Those are decisions that are so far out of our control, you know, at any level, because we just don't know. You know, that's, and I look at things pretty simplistically because I'm an emergency manager. I manage the emergency. And I'm not trying to be callous or brash about this, but I'm not in economic development. That's not my wheelhouse. I don't know anything about that. I don't know anything about running a college or running a tavern league or a police department, you know. I look at the numbers and go, what do we need to do to try to work at this? And I think that's where the potential of everybody at this table and everybody in our community is there of, we've got to move the needle. We've got to flip the script because we're number one with a bullet. You know, and in the last couple days, you know, Doug would say, well, we went from 100 and some to 80 some, you know, is that going to be a sustained dip, or is that an anomaly in the testing? You know, we don't know. But all of the indicators that we have of community spread, the positivity rate, you know, the hospitalizations, we know those are very troubling in the direction they're trending. So I think we really need to be solutions-based, and that's why I appreciate the mayor and council putting this together, this workshop together, so we can come together as a community and look at what are the solutions? What can we do to move the bar? Because, as I said, we don't want to see this last forever. You know, everybody has COVID fatigue, myself included. I understand that. You know, weddings and funerals and those things are important, and being social, and you know, isolation has its, I understand all that. But how do we balance the scales a little bit so that, you know, the risk is not tremendously overweening the benefit? So I don't know if that really answered your question, Mayor, but given the opportunity at the microphone, I thought I'd share those thoughts.
Yeah, I guess I was just hoping to hear, like, what, you know, from this day forward, is there anything that you believe that we can do differently in terms of consistent messaging? Is what the kind of common theme that's coming out everywhere from Dr. Raymond at the Wisconsin Medical College to Dr. Newman here, to Health Department? Is there anything that you can think of from our state of the city or the state of emergency for the city and our communications? Because, you know, we are now in the thick of it, and for whatever reason, not pointing fingers, we're not where we want it to be at this point. Is there something we can do differently with the messaging between city, county, state, university, schools, et cetera?
Absolutely. In more conventional disasters that, you know, an earthquake, a flood, a tornado, you know, things like that, clear, agreed-upon, concise, accurate information distribut, distribution is huge. You know, I mean, that's a premise of incident management. And we did that early on because there was, you know, so much unknown. We did a great job from the city and county working together to get messaging out. But, you know, now it's abundantly clear, we're in it for the long haul. So do we create that joint information center on a bigger scale where we're putting resources together so that we are giving one consistent message? You know, that's challenging. Because, you know, the university may want to put out one thing, and the hospital another, and the city, you know, but you've got to have that clearinghouse and set up that structure for how it's vetted. But then we all need to sing from the same sheet of music. You know, because every time, you know, if I put a post out there that, you know, Dr. Fauci says this, but, you know, Dr. So, you know, Dr. Smith says that, and then Dr. Newman says another thing, and well, my neighbor told me. We convolute that further, and we dilute that message, and we introduce skepticism and disbelief and questioning, you know, and a lack of faith in all of our abilities to be on the same page, you know, so they're saying.
So if I could just, like, take a little detour here, back to something that is very unique to this community, not entirely unique, and that is the question about our biannual pub crawl that happens the second Saturday in October and April. I'm getting different information from various entities, and that, as I understand it, would historically have been coming up this next Saturday. Is this a concern for the university? Is this a concern for the tavern league and downtown bars chief for the police department?
So we'll go ahead and, I guess, and I hate to put Dr. Levitt on the spot, but pub crawl's traditionally a university thing, and I think it would be good to hear, I think they've got some really good messaging that they're putting out to the students as it relates to participation, and I think it would be good to hear from them as to what they've been doing proactively to respond to that.
Well, thank you, Chief. The first thing I would say is that it's not sanctioned at all by the university. It's, I think people know the history of pub crawl. The second thing I would say is that the majority of the individuals who are at pub crawl are not university students. They're from the town, they're actually from out of town. A lot of folks come in from out of town. I hate that event, and that's the two worst nights of my life, this pub crawl, simply because it's so many bad things can happen and oftentimes do. Whenever we have messaged the students, they're pretty determined, I got to tell you. You know, in terms of, this is something that I think is so, it's so connected to Oshkosh and the university in terms of the history of it, that it's a very, very difficult thing to fight. My sense of it is that their presence in the downtown area is on the decline. It's not quite as busy as it used to be, but they've moved over into house parties in the east neighborhoods, east, right over by the university. So that's something I think we all need to work on together, on how to, how to work with landlords, work with people who are on leases, and so they understand that that's, you can't have 1,000 people at your house for a party, which has happened before. So, yeah, I appreciate it. As a matter of fact, I'm not, I'm not sure we know what the status is this year, because there's not a lot out there right now, is my understanding on pub crawl. So I'm hoping maybe everybody takes the year off.
The information that we've been receiving from our various sources have indicated that there really is not a lot of appetite for pub crawl. I think a lot of it has to do with messaging that the university's put at the students regarding, regarding what happens at the off-campus housing. I would agree that the downtown bars, the taverns, they aren't necessarily a part of pub crawl any longer. They're just not facilitated there. Frankly, college students don't want to spend the money at the tavern. They want to buy their beer or whatever and do it at their houses. So it is house parties. Before the school year started, we began working with the university, putting into a notification process if we do come across a house party, where we notify the dean of students, where they can immediately respond to any report of a large gathering with students, where they can do the university sanctions. We're limited by what we can do legally at a house, that's a private residence. But there are certainly university sanctions that can be put into place that, again, we partner with the university to provide them that information. Whether or not we, whether or not we stop a house party right there, or sanctions come following that house party are irrelevant to the, to the day. It's, there's going to be sanctions, I would imagine, from the university, from any student that participates in a, in a major house gathering.
Mr. Patel?
Yeah, I put it out at our last meeting, and I think there was seven owners from Main Street there, and every one of the owners said they have heard nothing and they want nothing to do with it. But like you said, it's not in control of any of the bars. I mean, if these kids are going to come to town, they're going to come to town. Hopefully, they won't, but we've heard nothing. I don't know, we've received no paperwork. Normally, they send out, you know, you got to run these vessels and stuff, but I've heard nothing. So hopefully, they're not going to be that stupid.
Chief, thank you for the comments. I appreciate it very much.
Other council members, we have Councilmember Erickson. Are there other pieces that you're hearing from the community?
Sure, thank you. So I think, you know, I appreciate having this conversation with everyone, and I think I'll echo what has been already, particularly what Councilmember Ford had said. You know, I think, I think it's time for us really to come together and figure out, okay, what are our options? So that we can get through this quicker. By us not doing anything, we're not going to get through this any quicker. I think I've been talking to folks who have been impacted more on the employee side, so employees who have tested positive and now having to quarantine. So I'm interested in moving forward together, figuring out what can we do, how can we define roles, create some sort of structure? And what kind of capacity do we have for that kind of unified message? I'm also curious about, do we have capacity or ability to look at, you know, incentives that I think Amy had mentioned earlier, you know, really positively reinforcing the good practices that are happening? But I think, to sum it up, really, I think we need to be working together so that we can get through this quicker.
Thank you, Lindsay. Council Mayor Paschal?
I'm not going to add much, but I'm going to be a little, not going to add much, and I don't know how beneficial it's going to be what I add. But I'm going to be blunt, just because that's the way I've been the last couple weeks, because I'm kind of tired and impatient with the way that we, we as a community have managed this. Though there's bright spots, there's lots of challenges that exist within how we've handled this all the way from March. And I'm just going to reiterate, it's time for us to put aside all of our differences, all of our rhetoric, whether it's political, partisan, all of that stuff, and it's time to just work together and to say, we need to do what's best for the community of Oshkosh and its greater surrounding communities. It's time. It's time for us to do this together. And I think that's all I can add to this conversation, because it's of the utmost importance that we do this. I don't agree with some of the stuff that's put out in our community as to why we shouldn't do something or why we should do something, but the fact is that we need to find a common ground to move forward. We should not be on the front page of the New York Times. We should not have reporters from the Associated Press, the Washington Post, the LA Times, coming to our community showcasing that we're the epicenter in Wisconsin in the highest cases in the country. That should not be acceptable to us as we sit around this table. So I don't have ideas. I'm not going to sit here and say that I have ideas. But I do know that around this table, we do have ideas collectively together to solve this. Keeping our economy as open as much as we can should be the utmost imperative. But the overall community, health of our residents, and the people who utilize our community should be at the forefront of that. So that's all I got. Thank you.
So it sounds like everyone is interested in resiliency as a community. You know, consistent messaging has been stated over and over. And I guess, for anyone who's interested, the rest of the New York Times quote was, "There's not much anything else we, as a city council, can do to prevent uncontrolled community spread. It's too late to legislate and regulate our way out of it." That would have been a preventative. We're in a reactionary. So we're in the peak towards the post. How do we recover together and without doing more damage? Because it is our responsibility to protect the health, welfare, and safety of the general public. That's council's role, right? But it's also all of these other entities' role, along with individuals. So everybody's right here. It's not a right or wrong. It's the question of how do we now build the plane while we're flying it to come out of this disruption more resilient, more resiliently and rapidly? Next steps? Anybody want to throw out next steps? Dr. Newman?
Mayor, we want to change the incidence of COVID.
Mayor, we want to change the incidence of COVID. So we need to identify the one behavior, behavior that must be changed. And when you asked us to reflect on what we could have done different, I don't think we ever gave a consistent message or an ask of our community, we would appreciate it if you do this. But if you're trying to change this metric, we need to identify the one behavior or two behaviors that are gonna be most impactful. So when I look at behaviors, I look at wearing a mask, I look at washing hands, I look at staying socially distanced or avoiding groups. You know, one behavior could be closing restaurants and bars. If you prioritize the behaviors, honestly, in my personal opinion, wearing a mask is the one behavior that will have the most impact on the spread of this disease. And we have not messaged it collectively. If we could leave, this will be a good meeting if we leave here saying, this is the one behavior that we're going after, and we collectively agree on it, and we make that ask. We have not made the ask to our community. We have flooded them with information, but we have not just said, please blank. And what is that blank?
So we left off the call to action. Oops.
Can I make one point?
Yes, Gordon Hens has joined us, he'd like to speak.
Oh, I've been here, and it's been insightful, and I appreciate everybody's feedback. I just, I mean, I think John is kind of getting back to it. There's consequences of action and inaction, and I think everybody, we're not the only community struggling it, but our results are dire right now. Wisconsin, we were the second most open state in the country for three months this summer. In other words, we had the fewest restrictions of any kind, and our economy was still getting crushed, especially bars and restaurants. You know, and the question is, until we contain this, you know, until we are able to lower the numbers, until people have faith that they can go out in public and be safe, you know, the economy's not gonna be restored, and kids aren't gonna be in school, and we're gonna have these disruptions. And so I think, you know, we're better with carrots than sticks. I think there's, again, consequences, positive and negative, of, you know, of orders, but, you know, people don't understand masks, they don't understand it's for other people. You know, yet, you know, people's jobs, people's economic livelihood, our kids being able to have in-person instruction is completely dependent. I mean, you know, someone not choosing to wear a mask has a direct impact on everybody else, and somehow that individualism is kind of hitting us. And so I think, given the stakeholders who are at this table, you know, some sort of campaign or advocacy or something to reach people to get at what John and Doug and others are saying, you know, minimizing and reducing the number, you know, again, restaurants in other countries are up year over year, and the reason bars and restaurants are impacted harder is because you have sustained exposure indoors. So it just happens to be, there's an unlucky impact of that. So, you know, I'm just trying to get us to recognize that, you know, some of the, you know, things discussed out there have positive and negative impacts, but if we are gonna focus on what is the most, because I mean, you know, form of our conversation, to me, has felt like, you know, we're just not doing anything. But I mean, I don't think we're just in a flare-up. I mean, given the current cultural attitude towards things, I think this could just be sustained. I mean, we're not seeing the kind of changes, you know, and we also still see some reinforcement for the argument that there's nothing that we should be doing, you know, that just let it run its course or something. You know, I think we can't afford to do that. I would prefer no government action and everybody somehow taking it upon themselves, but it's gonna have to take a strong message with, you know, validators like the group in this room, right? Where, let me, you know, I know, I've talked to bars and restaurants that have spent a lot on sanitation, on, you know, lost capacity with table spacing, you know, have dealt with increased inflation on food prices and other things, but the reality is, there are plenty of places that aren't. We're seeing bars host annual festivals, you know, lack of mask enforcement, and that is what's crippling our economy, that's what's impacting schools. And so, you know, unless we hold each other accountable and change the culture and get behind time, like, if you want to support your neighbor's business, if you want to support vulnerable population's health, if you want people in school to get education, then you need to wear masks. So, you know, again, you know, I think we gotta steer in direction about what we can collectively do if the outcome is shared that we want to reduce the numbers.
Thank you, Representative Hens. Mr. Wilson would also like to speak again, and then I believe Amy Albright would like to, she's been waiting to. So, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I hope you can hear me okay. You know, just listening through all this discussion, and I think there has been more good that's been done than it's been getting credit for, but not to be defensive for our community, because we can do more. And one thing I think we should consider, you know, when John Newman talks, people listen. When Amy Albright talks, people listen. And so I think we ought to consider changing message, at least changing the messenger, because I know when I talk in our company, I've got people that say we shouldn't be wearing masks, he's just taking the point out, so they don't, it doesn't connect as well. I think for the community, Mayor, if you say it, there's gonna be half the community that's not, shouldn't be done. I think the opposite, you know, if John Casper says it, half the community's gonna say it shouldn't be done. So I think we need to think about his next step. How do we change the message to make it a little more personal, that we're better than this as a community? And how we need to work together. I've heard that common theme from a lot of us throughout this whole con. And who is best to deliver that message? That takes away the political side of things, it takes away the government, it takes away the business side, it takes a good message to say, hey, you know, there's people around this country making fun of us right now. What, are we gonna accept that? Or are we going to do something about it? And we are better than this. So this is my two cents, is we consider changing the message, not that the message, information is changed, but how we deliver it, I think is something we should consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just, I mean, I completely, completely agree with Wilson. I just think we don't, we don't have the choice of whether to do something or not. This perception is reality, and the perception right now is we're doing the worst. It doesn't matter if that's actually real. That is the perception right now, it's perception of visitors trying to come here. I mean, I have seen people saying they're gonna come here to visit their parents, but they're not gonna go out because it's so bad here. People who are saying they don't want to play our sports teams because they're from Winnebago County and the COVID situation is so bad. I mean, we cannot ignore the fact that this is out there, that this is what people's perception is regardless of whether it's true or not, it doesn't matter. The other thing we know is, at least from a tourism standpoint, 50% of people feel comfortable going into a bar or restaurant right now. That's what they're saying, you know, countrywide. This is the US, this isn't an Oshkosh thing, this isn't just a Winnebago County thing. That means 50% of the people aren't going out at all. So our entire base of who we drew from before is in half. And we know, they just came out this week with another travel sentiment that said that 50, 55, I've gotta put my glasses on, 55% of travelers, which really, travelers are the same as residents, they're really consuming, they're consuming the product the same way, feel more comfortable if people are wearing a mask. So the bottom line, it doesn't matter if the mask works or not, right? Like, if that's how we're gonna make people comfortable, and that's how we get people into our restaurants, and we can say that the staff are wearing masks and it helps businesses, like, let's look at the things that help get people in the businesses when it's getting cold out and we can't go outside. Or let's take all that money and buy heaters for everybody and put them around every restaurant so that they can have outdoor seating. I mean, what can we do as a community to come out with a headline that says something like, you know, "Oshkosh is helping the businesses survive, Oshkosh is doing everything they can do to help." I mean, some of the messaging that's come out from, I don't know where, I don't even know where it comes out, but it's like, restaurants should close, like, this was something from one of the counties, and they should only do carryout. Some of these restaurants have done every single thing that we've said to do right and that we've said is safe, we cannot change that now. I mean, they've come out with travel sentiments, saying that restaurants are safe, that if you go in with the people that you're with, and wear your mask when you go in, you know, if they're using a mask, it's low risk. We have like, we've gotta get behind the narrative that helps our businesses in a safe way, that makes us have a headline that's like, you know, revenue in restaurants is better, or restaurants are surviving COVID in the winter because of stuffs that we've taken collectively. And we just cannot stand back and not do anything. We just can't. I mean, these businesses are struggling regardless, regardless of, I mean, Jay, would you kill for 50% occupancy inside right now?
Absolutely.
So, I mean, it's not a, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I'm just saying, it's, it's about how we can help and how we can message and how we can get behind this.
So given the recent news that we received during this morning, that, you know, obviously was not previously understood, and that between now and November 6th, indoor gatherings are reduced to 25% of whatever that building is, with few exceptions, right? What our next steps need to be to focus more in within those parameters of how to keep the businesses open, what can we do to get those businesses that $100 million, right? So that they can stay open during that reduced capacity, that short-term sacrifice? Councilmember Olson Osby?
Thank you. So I guess a question that I would have, and I just tried to quick read through what the state new order is. What I'm getting from this is pretty much everybody does not have to comply except for those in the restaurant and taverns? Am I understanding that correctly?
It hasn't.
Or is it, you know, religious institutions, manufacturing?
No, the exceptions were religious services, I believe, and, I don't know, First Amendment, but obviously I haven't seen the actual order.
There are a lot of exemptions associated with that. It's generally geared towards commercially, commercially open businesses to the public.
So, so is it Target, Walmart, Pick 'n Save?
Any business that's open to the public, for a public to enter, a closed-in space would be a part of this. It's not centered directly on restaurants and bars.
And also places not open to the public, like office spaces.
Right, office spaces are not a part of it, manufacturing are not a part of it. It's specifically those places that the public can travel to, to enter in in a closed space.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So here's a question, I guess, that I have, and is Lynn listening, Ms. Lawrenson?
Yes, she is.
Okay, so, Ms. Lawrenson, I don't expect you to answer this question right now, but, you know, I'm wondering for those, you know, say perhaps that are in our tavern or, you know, restaurant, taverns that have food, that have already been impacted from the shutdown earlier this year. Mr. Soufley and I had a conversation over the weekend in which he had stated that there are other places within the country that, within a municipality, I believe it's municipality versus state, you know, that they have asked for some of the services that, when they don't have their own ability to deliver, such as Eat Street, DoorDash, things like that, that they have actually said to those businesses, you can only operate, and, you know, you're not taking 30% or better in an industry in which, you know, profits are single-digit, but if you want to operate and do business in this community, you're going to take 20% or 15%. I don't know that that's an answer, but I guess a question would be, is that something that would be helpful to the businesses? You know, my other concern as well, that we talk about, or actually, I don't think we're talking about, is that when you look at retail, restaurant, taverns, any type of situation like that, those people, we're not just talking about the business owners and the business owner's livelihood, they employ the people that are most financially vulnerable in this city. So when you are running at limited capacities, when you close them down, you are preventing them from making their rent payment, putting food on the table. So we don't just have the virus, we have the collateral damage of the virus. So my question is, with this mandate, then, what can we actively do very quickly to help the service, retail, tavern, restaurants, help them help their people? Because again, we have collateral damage from the virus. Again, that's our vulnerable population. Anytime you put more sticks than carrots, we seem to be seeing an increase in overdoses. So, you know, I guess my question would be, how many overdoses have we seen? Or attempted suicides, not just the suicides, and things of that nature. And when it comes to messaging, perhaps, I do like a single train. I think I'm very much different from a couple of my counterparts. I think this community has done a fantastic job of working together. We have a virus. It is unfortunate that we got our name in the paper and that we were on the news, but I honestly don't think that's a failure of any organization, I don't think it's a failure of the businesses, the county, or municipality, or hospitals. I think we've done well. I think it was our turn to get hit, like a number of other cities, municipalities, and states. So let's move forward from that to Ms. Amy's point. I am all about positive messaging. It is my understanding that the county is working with the Herald to get information out in a campaign. We certainly have Oshkosh Media, we've got Annie, we've got Jake, we've got their team. We certainly can do that. I don't want to recreate the wheel, and I don't want to spend money to recreate the wheel. I think we've got some phenomenal things already in place, it's just how do we accentuate it? And then I would just, you know, ask that, you know, Mr. Levitt, I know it's a challenge with the university students, that has to be like herding cats, you know, but are there some things within your population, and are there some things that, if we're gonna continue to use a little bit of the stick approach that you could use to maybe keep them in line, I don't know what that is, is that an option? And then I would ask Mr. Newman, you know, obviously, we have a hell of a healthcare system in our area, we are so fortunate with what we have, but within the messaging, is there any way that there's one solid messaging coming out and not all the social media posts of a lot of different opinions that are part of your frontline? That sometimes really detears and sends people off in a whole different direction. Is there something that you guys can do to provide the county with one messaging? And that's it. So those are some things that I think would be helpful in order for us to move forward, but I think we need to act very quickly.
Well, I guess I'd just like to say that I don't think there's anybody that would sit here and say, we're doing fine. We may have patted ourselves on the back that we've done everything we could, and it was just our turn to get hit. But the truth of the matter is, we are where we are, and something has to change. Because if we keep doing the pat-on-the-back thing and not doing more individually, organizationally, community-wise, we're not gonna get a different result. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I've had some very good conversations with so many of you over the past six, seven months, but, you know, we're dealing with the situation in front of us. Chancellor Levitt and I had an opportunity to talk on Friday, and he was talking about messaging that he was doing to the university community. And he basically said, here's what my message is gonna be, and it's very simple, and it kind of follows Dr. Newman's advice. Here are the basics, stick to them. And I said, sign, you know, put our name to it. I think it's appropriate that we signed into that. We weren't advocating any big regulation, we were saying, you need to do the right thing. I've heard so many people using exceptions, but those exceptions on the bad side are the ones we all have to stand up for and say, those are unacceptable. And it doesn't sound like it's necessarily a regulatory thing. And that's where the city government comes in. Are we gonna put regulations in? And the mayor and I had a conversation, what's our role? Our role at its core is to deliver basic public services, police, fire, public works. But as the mayor said, health, safety, and welfare is our overall responsibility. Are we all willing to say that there are certain behaviors? I don't care if it's a crowded bar or a crowded hair salon, crowds are not a good idea, and we need to discourage those regardless of the nature, so that we don't single out just bars. There are so many of our businesses, I mean, I think somebody said Jay would be ecstatic to get 50% capacity. The state's gonna mandate it until it gets overturned or it expires, and we're still gonna be in the same boat. Setting the standards and letting people know, this is unacceptable, and then follow the positives, but that messaging, and we all need to sign on to it, and that includes the Tavern League, and it's not the single- And that includes the tavern league, and it's not to single anybody out because it's not just the bars. It's everything, because you're right, Madam Mayor, it's not, we do have a problem, and we do need to fix it. And, you know, look in the mirror, we are the solution to our own problem. Can we get that type of messaging out about what's not acceptable? We know what's acceptable, social distancing, masking, all those things, and we have to emphasize those as sort of the basics. It's not, you have three, four, five things, but we have to say that these things are unacceptable. And I don't want to single out any establishment, whether it's a tavern or a hair salon, but we need to say, "This is unacceptable." And it's a little bit of guilt. My mother raised me right. Guilt was a good tool, but if we're going to do better, we need to look ourselves in the mirror and say, "Let's fix this."
Is there a fixed period of time, Dr. Newman or Doug? A fixed period of time that could make a difference? I'm under the impression that 44.1 days as of Friday was the doubling time. So, if everybody did everything perfect right now, would our numbers still go up temporarily? What would a 10-day cooperative agreement at 100% compliance do?
Yeah, I think setting that 10-day expectation would be a big mistake, because I think, you know, to your point, I don't think we should be beating ourselves up. The disease hit us at eight months into it, and quite honestly, we're freaking tired of it. And so, the people are exhausted. And so, we got hit when our guard was down, as opposed to April, our guard wasn't down. That's back looking forward. I would say that we were going to need to keep these very specific behaviors intact until either there's a vaccine or we've all gotten the disease. I don't think I have another answer to that.
So, not, there's not a prescribed time? It's indefinite? This has to happen, period?
I'll tell you what, you're setting yourselves up to fail, because if it happened sooner, we were wrong, and if it takes longer, we were wrong. It's like when people ask me, "How long do I have to live?" I'm not answering that question. Because you're going to be mad at me if I'm right, you're going to be mad at me if I'm wrong.
Mayor, if I could make an observation?
Yes.
Something that, as a community here in the city of Oshkosh, we should be aware of, is that we are actually a county-wide organization. We have seven different cities, municipalities, law enforcement jurisdictions, fire services of various degrees. There's seven law enforcement jurisdictions within the county itself and governments. That doesn't include the smaller governments that we have. We're not a state. So, we're a part of this community as a whole, 156, 150,000 people, 157,000 people. So, when a resident from somewhere else comes into the city of Oshkosh because they live anywhere else in the county, or they live south of us, or west, or north, what we do in our little 24-square miles, 25-square miles, it has to be a broader, it has to be a broader paintbrush than that. And so, cooperation and communication has to be, I think, more at the county level, where we should be a part of that conversation. Although we are the largest jurisdiction in the county, obviously, we have a large influx of those who don't live in our county that do their social life outside of the city, and then they come to the city to work. And if you wanted to impact a spread, this is a messaging that is a county message more so than a city message. And we should be a part of that city message, but we shouldn't be the flag bearer for that message. This is a county-wide messaging that needs to occur, and we shouldn't lose sight of that. We don't necessarily want to legislate, we don't want to carrot-stick it from a city level. We want to make sure that we're having a unified message through all of the municipalities and all the governing bodies here within the county in order to facilitate a positive change. Because we can do all the changing we want to within the city, we're not going to impact the other nearly 100,000 people that live in the county.
Well, if we, we certainly could do some of those things. We don't want to. Those are some of the tools in the toolbox. You know, what timeframe are people comfortable with giving this collective central messaging? And as Chief Smith pointed out, not just at the city level or the county level, but even beyond, because as we know, Outagamee, Brown, Calumet, you know, the virus doesn't know those borders. So, what timeframe do you think is appropriate to give this next steps of central messaging and instructions, re-instructions at the individual choices and behavior level before we have to consider other measures? I mean, I think the state's made that decision for us today, but again, we don't know how long that lasts. Councilmember Ford?
Well, I guess really a question, who is going to staff it? I know, who is going to staff the effort? I mean, I think that it would be important for something like this, that it can't be 12 of us around the table designing a marketing team. It'd be great if we could utilize some type of private sector entity, whether that's using philanthropic funds or something, but under the guidance of this body that can actually be effective and know how to do something like this.
Who's volunteering? I think that sounded like a voluntold.
I guess my question would be, again, where is the money coming from when we're already strapped in a number of areas, other than like, say, for instance, we know that we do have some funds for, you know, businesses? So, I guess my question is, because what I consistently hear is that it sounds like sometimes it's more about manpower, people to contact trace, people to help make calls, things like that, or get communication out. You know, I guess more my question would be, can we take the entities that we already have that are already working hard? And Madam Mayor, I didn't mean to say before, not saying we're taking this time to pat ourselves on the back, but I think people are working their butts off and at a limited capacity. I think everybody's got all oars in the water. We're just, we're in a tough time right now, but we can do it, and we're resilient. So, I guess my question would be, is from some of the entities, and I would never ask the CBD, because you're already down to two and a half people?
Uh huh.
You know, from five? But, you know, are there some others? Is there the university? Would this be an opportunity for those in the nursing program, you know, to volunteer time, you know, to help the county? I guess, you know, could we think creatively that way and leave more of the money not to hire people, but to get that back in the hands of employees and businesses that are impacted?
And I guess I'm going to ask city manager and put him on the spot, because I did see an email we received today from the league and in their update that the Department of Revenue is providing some kind of aid amounts for video service? Is that something that's useful here?
No, that's very, very minor. That's revenue that, it's a minor increase in one revenue that they already told us we're getting cut 200,000 in another one. So, it's, that's just balancing the budget. You know, we're in the middle of an emergency, you know, to the degree, I don't want the issue of funding getting in the way. It's really more about who can take the lead on messaging. But are all of our logos going to get attached to it? You know, I told the chancellor, you know, throw us in. We're in on the message he sent out to his university community. Are we all willing? And I put Pat and John on the spot a little bit, and Dr. Newman, but I heard Dr. Newman is, he'll slap his logo on that in a heartbeat. Can we show a unified message that we are all in support of these standards? Now, I'm not asking Pat to go out and shame members, nor John. I think that would be inappropriate. But it's what we stand for and what we won't stand for. And it's like, we don't, we can't accept that. Does that mean the police are going to come and do something? No, it's just, you should do it because it's the right thing to do. Is that powerful enough? Then we could spend the money, and I'm not worried about that. I don't think we can let, you know, messaging, it say, "Money is the holdback."
No, and that's not what I was saying. What I heard was hiring a position which would take an enormous amount of time and individuals, I don't think.
Staffing an effort.
Yeah. That's where I, you know, yeah, a little bit different. The messaging, spend the money.
So, on the messaging front, or what information should get out there? That really needs to come from public health, Doug Garen in turn, but we got to figure out how to de-word it a bit, make it simpler, something that you can remember, you know, stay home, or, you know, stay out of crowded places, stuff that's going to be more relatable. But public health really has the responsibility for telling us as a group of citizens on how best to protect ourselves, in my opinion.
And I guess we just need to figure out how we can support that message and in that shared goal, if we're there yet. Pat, do you think, do you think you can get on board with this?
Well, I can get on board with it because it's going to be a mandate, but to get people to accept that, I mean.
No, the messaging, this consistent messaging about personal choices.
Well, sure, I mean, we've put out stuff for the city many times, but, you know, I can't guarantee that everybody in the city is going to follow it. I mean, you've got a lot of people that are not leaving the dorms, leaving their houses. I mean, there's house parties all over the place, and these people are not going to listen to, you know, anything. So, I'm not sure how you do solve the problem.
John?
Well, our messaging has been consistent with everybody else. We've been cutting and pasting. I mean, when I get it from CDC, when I get it from the county, when I get it from whoever, I cut it, I paste it, and I send it out. So, I mean, that's been going on for, since March.
Councilmember Ford?
Well, so, right, I get, right, the specific question is, obviously, you're not in enforcement. None of us are, well, Chief Smith is, but none of us, we're not enforcement entities. But just having all of our logos on a joint campaign would solve that message, would solve that problem, or help address that problem, saying that, "Hey, these community leaders at this table endorse this idea."
If I could speak to enforcement real quick, there's a consensus, there's actually unanimous consensus with the chiefs and the sheriff here within the county, and I think that Doug is of the same mindset as it relates to enforcement. We certainly don't want to, we don't want to be in the place that we're using enforcement, heavy-handed enforcement to change people's behaviors. As it relates to the mask ordinance, as it relates to now this new one, we're all working right now to try to figure out the best path for enforcement, we are all still at the mindset, as I'm getting from chiefs and sheriff, of the way the order is written doesn't make it very clean for a law enforcement enforcement. This is more, again, it's a public health enforcement with consultation with the district attorney, and we have had conversation with the district attorney on the mask ordinance, on how that gets enforced. But what I have heard Doug say, and if I'm still putting words in your mouth, let me know correctly, please do, you don't have the staff to do enforcement because you're chasing behind tests and contact tracing and such things as that. So, one help that can be provided to Doug's office is providing him some resource to do a, you get one-pass-type letter-type situation, and then allow his office to move forward with anything if an entity isn't following this order. And it's a short window. We're talking about a period of November 6th, 8th, or whatever the date is. But police officers and sheriff's deputies should not be going to a business issuing a citation. So, I think if we can provide resources to Doug to help him in that process, that would be very helpful for him, and, because he's trying to take care of the health of people. But the way the order is generally written, the way they have been written, it's a public health order, and it's to be referred to the district attorney's office for enforcement of that. And there's a lot of logistics that are associated with that, and Doug would certainly enjoy some help on the enforcement side of it. He manes a 1-800 number right now where folks can report violations of these orders, and he gets an enormous amount of calls for that. And I think, Lindsay, you can attest to that as well. I think you've seen those calls coming in, and if we can provide some assistance in that regard to the county, that would be very helpful for him.
So, Chief, if I could just ask you then, I don't know, this is probably not a good analogy, but if we have, you know, no parking within X number of feet of whatever vision triangle, you know, we do choose to enforce those civil citations, right, for the public health and safety. Is that right?
That's correct. On a case-by-case basis, officers are still afforded discretion as to whether or not they enforce that based upon the circumstances that are presented to them.
So, help me understand, between you two and the way that the orders have come out, that there can be a civil citation of the, whatever it is, $200. Who writes that citation?
As I understand it from the orders, the district attorney would be the one who would issue the citation related to that. And so, we would filter that information to the health department, which we have been doing, and they would do the investigation and forward it to the district attorney.
So, nobody can go into a group of 100 people packed into a space like this right now and say, "Hey, you know, 90 of you need to go home"?
That would be a very bad thing, because we, as it's often been shared in law enforcement, is that we govern at the will of the people. We enforce at the will of the people. And at any given night, I may have nine, 10 police officers working, and I'm not going to send an officer into an establishment with 100 people and tell them to go home. That's going to be very difficult. So, the enforcement side of it is to a post-incident investigation.
Okay.
Where we say, "Okay, you had this occur, this is not in line with the governor's order, and we need you to change your behavior." Whether or not we enforced it that night, or we enforced it later on down the road through the proper steps, that's a decision that has to be made at that point.
City attorney, I believe the way those orders are written, it says that municipalities, counties, entities can go beyond more restrictive than the established orders? Is that your understanding?
If you're talking about the two governors' orders, they do have that local authority, it doesn't supersede it if it's more restrictive.
So, if we said it was going to cost $1,000 if you chose to continue your party post-event?
That's not more restrictive, that's just more amount of forfeiture.
Ah, okay, okay. Thanks for clarifying that. Did everybody hear that?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, there's a lot of different ways that can be interpreted, but the, I think the chief was trying to point out that enforcement of this law, regardless of whether it holds up or not, is going to be extremely difficult to just lay on Doug and his staff, the chief and his resources. It's really about setting a standard. And Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I totally agree, right? A policy is so blunt, and we've all heard from the business community that it, right, we don't want to put our police officers in a place where they can't enforce something. We don't want to put our business community in a place where we're inequitably causing harm. That's why really I was hoping today that we could leave here with some agreement among all of these entities, that we can get on board collectively to a proactive, positive campaign, something we can do, right? Something that's not going to be overturned by the Supreme Court tomorrow, something that's not going to put people out of business, but something that we can all sign on to to say, "We're in this together, make positive progress." We're not going to solve this problem, but we can make progress.
Well, the question I have is, what does happen when this is over? When the Supreme Court, you know, we're in it for a week or whatever it is, Supreme Court overrules it, or the deadline, what is it, November 6th?
Yeah.
Comes and goes, then is the city going to say, "Well, that's gone, so we're going to do it, we're going to do our own"?
Well, that's my.
I mean, that's part of the, you know, reason why we're here, because that was starting to happen.
Madam Mayor?
And nobody wants, I mean, we're, people are tired of this stuff.
To be.
City manager, and then councilmember Ford?
On a weekly basis, many of the people at this table have been meeting regularly, university, health department, Aurora, our police-fire emergency management, the local hospitals as a group, the HERC group, if I'm correct. We meet regularly. We can ask that group to maybe expand our membership, as it were, to some of our stakeholders who are here, because we need to get this messaging out. Because, John, I agree, if we wait for something to get overturned or expire, we're going to be sitting at the same table again. We need to get the messaging out, set, just establish that this is what we want as a community, this is what we expect. community, this is what we expect. We all expect this. This isn't just us. This is what we've been hearing collectively from everybody. We need to move forward with this. So, that's what I'm thinking, you know, I, Mike, some of the stuff you had shared with me, you know, sort of a central point. We have a central point, but we need to get a unified message out. And it is the same stuff we've been talking about for months, John, but we need to all attach ourselves to this, that that's what we need to do to be successful. Because we're not going to dig ourselves out of this hole until we just say, I'm going to stop doing this behavior. And if that means I'm not going to go to this establishment or that establishment because I don't like what they're doing, I'm going to choose, say, no thanks, I'm not interested in going to this wedding because you have too many people. We can't be there as big brother, telling them what they're doing wrong. They got to have the, there's got to be the little angel on their shoulder, whispering in the air, don't do that. Not because we told them to do it, but because their conscience is telling them that that's the right thing to do. Because if we have to go the regulatory route, we've all heard what bad things, what bad outcomes will come of this.
The other piece of this is, it didn't come up today, and that is, you know, several businesses have shared, employee service workers, this kind of thing, that we have a number of businesses that operate in the community that do not have their employees on the books, that they pay them cash. And, you know, no judgments, but basically, that amounted to an inability to avail themselves of PPP for those, whatever it was, eight weeks because of the documentation required. So, I guess the other, you know, kind of messaging out there on the business side of things is, if you're operating that way, change, so that you can avail yourselves of either federal money, or the city GoEDC dollars, or things like that. Because some of the concerns of the business owners have been, I can't close down because I got mouths to feed. And some of those employees say, I'm getting paid, you know, cash on the books, I can't apply for unemployment. We can't document and get this other assistance. So, you know, I don't know what the other resources are that we can help those that are running along the fringe, you know, get up to speed and try to make use of those other resources. And quite honestly, I don't know the number in our community because it's an underground economy.
If that's happening, that's a small, small minority of people.
Amy?
I do think, just, I know that everybody is probably ready to be done with this, but just from a messaging standpoint, something that has really worked for us, and something we've gotten a lot of buy-in on, is kind of this support local, support your local economy, keep your businesses, you know, going. And I just wonder if somehow this can be tied to that, where it's like, you know, participate so that, you know what I mean? So, the messaging is different than just what they've been hearing before, but it's like, you know, if we have this state mandate that is requiring masks, whether it's overturned or not, I mean, people are going to have to participate, and, you know, that it's, that instead of saying, you know, stay home, stay home doesn't help the business, I mean, you may as well go back to safer at home then, you know what I mean? If the messaging is stay home, that's not helping with 25%. So, it's like, somehow we have to be able to promote that there are safe things that people can do to support, whether that's curbside delivery, going in if the, if, you know, the businesses are doing the capacity limits, that kind of stuff. So, I think we've got to, there, a couple people have said that carrot, but you've got to give people a reason to rally behind this, and make the messaging, I think, a little bit different than maybe it was before, like, you know, you're going to wear the mask, you're going to do these three things, but it's because we want our community to thrive. I mean, these businesses are going to be open, they're not being closed down, so they're open at this weird thing, like, how do we support them? So, I think we can't lose sight of just, that's where I get really frustrated with the messaging. It's like, well, stay home, well, how does that, how does that help our businesses?
You know, quite honestly, I agree with you, it doesn't. And some of those businesses won't make it. It's like, we've already, we know that some of the folks are going to pass away from the virus as COVID fatalities, and they're real people, and they're real families, and it's the same, you know, the same is true, I think, with some of the businesses, that we know there'll be COVID fatalities as well. But in any event, you know, the messaging that we're getting from the medical folks is, stay home when you can. You know, if you can't, you know, comply with this new state order, you know, we're just going to keep getting the same results.
No, I agree with that, but I would say the messaging can't be around the state order, because to the point where it gets, if it gets overturned, we're just, we're back at square one. We have to come up with a message for our community that helps support business, but helps get people masking, get people doing the things that we want them to do. And we have to get creative with that, because the people that are already masking and doing it, they're already on board. We've got, we've got this, we've got some people we're not going to hit. I mean, I would love to say we're going to get 100%. I love marketing, I love to get people to do what I want them to do, but I worked in the YMCA, like, there's people that never, that are never going to work out. There's people that are never going to wear the mask. There are people that I think we can encourage to do this for the right reasons, kind of to Mark's point, like, to support the local economy because we want our businesses to survive. I think we have to get creative with how we, how we try to move that needle with the people that aren't participating. And I don't know what that is, but I worry that going, you know, the state mandate's the state mandate, and we know how that's been working with masks. It's, some people do it, some people don't.
Mr. Garen, Councilmember Allison Osby, and then Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate your comments, Amy. I guess I'll first bounce off of that, and that is, we're in this situation because we haven't been following the guidance. And it's very true that in order to move forward with this and be a better community, and be a safer community, we need to get buy-in from those that are currently not participating, and that are currently not heeding the recommendations that will keep us safe and make us better. So, I think we just have to keep in mind that, you know, there's a lot of people that are supportive and doing the right thing, but clearly, there's a lot that are not. And how do we change their minds? I think one of the things that we can use at the health department is, you know, really a network of referrals. We, you know, we're talking about enforcement, and this new order, the health department receives complaints. And we contact those businesses, we educate those businesses, or other entities that might be, it's not just businesses, and try to provide that guidance. It would be exponentially better if we could refer, or we could have as a part of our hotline network, you know, a referral to champions and influencers within the community for those sectors, so that if it's a problem with the tavern, we can refer it to someone that's a tavern owner, that can work with them, and, you know, that can help them navigate that path. As the health department, we can call them and tell them, hey, we got a complaint, these are the things that you need to do. But to additionally have someone that they can talk to, to help them navigate that issue and get through it, would be helpful. We would accept volunteers from any of the community sectors here to be a part of our hotline, or a referral, an automatic referral to another organization to help support those people that really need help. And then, you know, when we get multiple complaints, we will have to reach out to law enforcement and say, hey, you know, this is a problem, it's just not going away, education isn't helping anymore. We will need the support of law enforcement, all seven of them, in order to make a positive change or an impact there. Because we know that we're not going to change everyone's mind, but what I'm hearing today, and my concern today is that we're still not in agreement. We're still, we don't, we still don't have, you know, full buy-in, that we're going to really work together, and that we're really going to use the same messaging, and that we're really going to stick to it. And it's a sacrifice for some, and it's a sacrifice more for others. We get that, but we still have to be on the same page and share that same message. We have, we are happy to host that messaging. We have been pushing out messaging. We put out reports every single day. We put out summary reports every week. We maintain resources on our website. And we're happy to host all of those as a central distribution point of information for the community. If we want to do an ad campaign or something on top of that, we're certainly interested in being a part of that. But we have to get to the point where we actually agree to support one another, even when it's not in our best interest. It's in the community's best interest, but maybe not in our personal best interest, or our business's best interest, and to try to find ways to help support those that are being negatively impacted. But messages aren't going to do anything until we have the support of everyone to move forward with this.
So, Councilmember Allison Osby?
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge, because obviously, I think, you know, everybody's been meeting for two and a half hours, and you asked about kind of like, how do we proceed next up forward? So, I guess what I wanted to ask is, obviously, I think, even though we're a few months apart, Mr. Ford and I, I think, I think we, we're kind of on the same page. So, what I would actually like to recommend is perhaps, Mr. Ford and I work together very quickly, very swiftly. We probably maybe touch base if, Mr. Garen, Mr. Newman, Amy, you know, if we also kind of touch base with you, but let maybe perhaps Mike and I get together and kind of noodle this over a bit, and then maybe perhaps, if we can act swiftly, and if we can get responses quickly, maybe even have something that we can bring to council for some ideas come next council meeting.
Well, our next council meeting is the-
Week from today.
A week from today.
13th. So, before the 13th, I think we're probably going to end up with another special meeting before there, depending upon what some of the other responses are to state things that are out there. There's a potential of a ruling on the statewide face mandate. We may end up be, in a special meeting before that. And then, council members, if you could stay around, because we need to talk about virtual meetings. Mr. Garen?
Thank you for the last comment here. We need consistency. I mean, you know, it's been a whip saw from the state, you know, in not agreeing, and having orders, and not having orders, and not having them again. Having the city lay down the base of what our expectations are, so that when those changes occur at the state, that we're not impacted by that. So, I would, you know, I would really suggest, as has already been approached, is that you have some language ready to go to put in place if, you know, the state order gets pulled. If we have that in place, and even if it's less restrictive right now, it will be in place if the state rules fall back. That'll just give us consistency as a community, that we're not going to end up with all of the changes that occur at the state level. Ideally, this is, you know, something that occurs at the state level, or even at the federal level, but we don't have that. And we have to be better than that, and we have to be an example for other communities. We can be an example for other communities, and just having some basic language in place with a baseline set of expectations for everybody that aren't going to be so influenced by the state politics right now.
So, you're suggesting that we do it at the city level, rather than it be done at the county level?
I'm suggesting that we get it where we can. I mean, ideally, at the county level would be better, and of course, at the state level would be better yet. But we know that we can't really rely right now on the state having any kind of an order in place for any particular amount of time with the amount of disagreement there is. So, you know, as the largest municipality, you could certainly, you know, borrow the language that's there, related to masking, related to occupancy, and have that in place such that when it changes at the state level or falls apart, that we still have that consistency locally. And, you know, we will definitely work to try to achieve some of that at the county level as well.
Councilmember Ford?
Do we have a timeline for when the county will be considering these measures? And I guess it's, right, with the county hosting the health department, that's, that's the most rational place for that to occur.
Yeah.
If we're going to have a local health ordinance. So, I think we need a little bit of information on that.
Quite honestly, Doug, my experience with the county, and this isn't a health, the county health department issue, it's a county issue. If we take the lead on it, it's going to be, well, we're just doing this because Oshkosh is doing it, and then other parts of the county reject it. How about if we jump on the county's bandwagon, so it doesn't look like we're the ones who are trying to impose our will? And there's this misconception that I've seen for years, prior to me getting here, that somehow Oshkosh is viewed as being some type of bully in county government. If anything, I think we're, for us being the largest municipality, we're not very influential, and, but it's perceived that way. If the county can take the lead on that, then, you know, I think we can jump on board with it fairly easily. But, and then just from a top-down approach, you know, I think we all agree that we're somewhat relieved that the state did something, because not just it takes us off the hook, but it also says, there's a standard that we all have to enter into, so that you don't have to sit there and wonder what Outagamy or what PAC are doing. You can follow this uniformly. Similarly, if it's done at the county level, then we can follow it uniformly. And there isn't inconsistent application across jurisdictional boundaries in law enforcement, which is, which is a tough part for us.
So, council support for, to the county board supervisors?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear that. There's a lot of back noise here.
No problem.
All meeting long.
Council support of the county board to support public health in being able to, you know, issue an order, or enforce an order, or continue an order that's at the state level would be immensely helpful. We could certainly have, you know, a more level playing field and not have this roller coaster of different changes. We, it is likely that you'll see some action on that this month at the county board, and perhaps even at the board of health level. I talked with Dr. Ramos, the county board chair, earlier today and yesterday. And we are definitely working to try to put something in place that has legislatable oversight, that allows the health department to, you know, standardize some of this, this roller coaster that we're going through.
So, it doesn't sound like this is a simple one thing resolution. Councilmember Allison Osby, Councilmember Ford have volunteered to work with Mr. Newman, Mr. Garen on a campaign ad, whatever campaign-type thing, is that what it's-
It's to talk about maybe perhaps some ideas that might be something that will catch the attention, but in a positive, rather than negative way, to get across. To Mr. Newman's point, what are we asking? What are the one or two things that would significantly help, you know, the health and safety of the communities?
And then, if that doesn't work out, then we have these other, other things to consider. Councilmember Ford?
Since he couldn't be here, I want to point out, too, that Councilmember Muggerhour had sent me some specific ideas along the lines of what you're discussing, Deb, so I can engage with those as well.
I couldn't quite catch that.
Councilmember Muggerhour had sent some, sent me some ideas along that front ahead of this meeting, since he could not attend. So, I just want to bring that, bring that up as well, that I plan to borrow his ideas and steal them while working with you, Deb.
And staff stands ready to help. Chief Stanley and I have kicked around a couple different ideas based on these discussions that I think we can share. If we're starting to lose, and we're losing our stakeholders, I appreciate Doug and Dr. Newman hanging around, but maybe we can, you know, start having those discussions. The mayor did bring up another issue about, you know, virtual council meetings. We're reaching the point within staff, and I think there's an issue in the community, that it may be appropriate to, rather than cancel meetings like we did, some would argue prematurely back in April and May, that we go to virtual meetings. And I thought, I think it's relevant in this discussion, and was hoping to get some feedback from council members on that. I'm not sure if Councilmember Erickson is still, is still here. We're better capable of doing an all-virtual meeting than we are capable of doing a hybrid meeting. So, I welcome any input on that, because I think we're reaching that point. In terms of staffing, you know, Mr. Newman is participating virtually today. There's other staff members that, for one reason or another, need to participate virtually for the time being. And I think that may be a new normal for a little while.
Well, and I also have concerns about, you know, the safety of our staff, and our, you know, continuity of government with council members as well. So, you know, we've been prepared, we've delayed that, and if this is not the time, then- prepared. We've delayed that. And, and if this is not the time, then when is? And if there's a reduction in staff, well, since there is a reduction in staff. So, Councilmember Erickson, did you want to weigh in on going all virtual for council meetings?
Sure. I think it's worked out great for me today. This was my first council meeting participating virtually. So I appreciate having this option. And I think, like you said, if there's any time to do this, it's probably now. So I, I've had a good experience with it so far. And I would be supportive of moving to all virtual now that we have the option to do that.
Councilmember Paschal?
Sure. So, it's not a secret that I spent a lot of time doing meetings from home. So, I, from experience, I can tell you that, that I can concur with Mr. Roloff's comments that it's better to do it all as, as virtual than it is to have some not on and some, some onsite and some virtually. It doesn't work well because the objective of us as leaders is that we all are able to hear each other, understand each other, and to be able to hear how one thinks and views and votes and doing that. So, I really think that, that this is something that we should have done a while ago, at least as a council. And, and I think that the times definitely suggest that we should be doing it now as an all-virtual meeting. For at least, what's a good period? A month? Month and a half? Two months? I mean, in, in all reality of how long it takes for, for this to not be an issue within our community, could be well more than two months. So I think it's the safest and most proactive way for us to, to do our roles within the community.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, I, I have no problem with that. If we can't follow CDC guidelines for gathering size, I mean, we can lead by example here. I just ask that we're flexible about it and not put a, a time on it. And maybe we could just pull before meetings. Because if, if situations improve, I think it is better to be meeting in person. But I have no problem.
Councilmember Alison Asby?
Based on the conversation that I had with Mr. Roloff, you know, and due to just situations, staffing and otherwise, I think at this point it makes it best for everybody involved. If we do move to virtual, but I'm not in favor of putting a timeframe on it.
I think we'll know the time.
Right.
You know, it'll, you know, we went back to regular meetings because the time was right. And just, I hate to say it's all based on feeling, but the feeling, especially in, in light of Secretary Palm's order, it seems like we need to walk that walk. But should it be overturned or expire, I think it's still our feel, our call, that it's the time is right to, to go back to face-to-face, hybrid-type meetings. But staff will start working on that. And, and just so everybody knows, I'm going to do that with all boards and commissions. I'm not just going to say just council. There's plenty of plan commission meetings where contentious issues are there, and we understand that. And we'll do everything we can to accommodate the public. The public will not be denied an opportunity. I just, the mayor and I, I said, I thought it was an appropriate thing to talk about, given what we're, we're doing here. And I'm sorry to get off the track, but I didn't want to leave and then say, oh, we forgot to mention it. So thank you, Mayor, for letting me bring the issue up.
And then if I could just add back to what Councilmember Alison Asby and Councilmember Ford are looking at doing is, you know, in some of our messaging, I don't know if we can look to other organizations who have de-stigmatized other health conditions such as mental illness and others, you know, if there's an element in that message to de-stigmatize it, I, I would just ask that that be considered.
Madam Mayor, one of the, the links that, you know, I've, I've looked at is how do people do things not just, you know, on a ma, a micro level, but at a macro level? They have had success in other countries by using humor as a way to get across the message there. I have seen some incredibly hilarious, funny things that have actually gotten engaged community participation. It's a little bit thinking outside of the box, but I think everybody can agree that if we're eight months into the same kind of messaging, you know, that sometimes change is, is good and sometimes change is fresh. So I'd like to share those with Mr. Ford as soon as we get together. And maybe it's something incredibly straight-line, no humor, but I'd like to actually explore some things. And that's why I would like to engage Ms. Amy. I just wrote her a note that said, I'm relying on her to bring the fun to a very stressful situation.
So are you guys volunteering to do like dance TikTok videos that are like Macarena or Gangnam Style?
We will be volunteering others to do that. We will be choosing, and people will need to step up to the plate.
Actually, I think the Police Department did a very successful entertaining video a couple of years ago. You might have some experience here.
We also were part of a pub crawl video in 2016 where the, the UWO chief and myself were both placed in a position where our words were turned into a parody video of pub crawls. So it can be a fun time.
There you go. So I, I don't know, do we cover everything? Is everybody fully, you know, saturated with this today? A lot to absorb.
Mary, you, Pat Patel came back in because you wanted to, you know, an opportunity to say something?
Oh.
Have you given that opportunity?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Did you not get a chance to finish your thoughts?
Well, we were talking about 25%. And there's no way that a bar restaurant can operate their food and alcohol costs, their insurance, possibly their lease, rent, whatever. There's no way that they can put a staff on with 25%. And unfortunately, that's, I think, why Jay left because he's one that understands how to run a business properly. So it's going to be very difficult. I went out to talk with the chancellor and he actually left before I got a chance to talk to him. But I've got 27 emails in about 15 minutes. And I can assure you that I'm not going to be polite, but people aren't going to understand this. So to not throw me and Dean to the wolves here, if there is going to be some penalty for people not paying attention to the crowds or something, it's got to be brought on slowly. Because you, you start talking a thousand dollar fine to these people who can't pay their bills now, they're not going to even pay their property back, you're going to send that industry and the Police Department back in 20 years.
So did you catch the piece that talked about the $100 million business assistance in order to help offset that?
Well, they, they definitely need it. And they don't need loans, you know. I'm not a big fan of free money, but this is a situation that has never happened. And they're not going to survive through the winter. They're not only want to be quoted at what percent, but they are really hurting. I mean, when they start using their college education money and any type of medical assistance money, I mean, they're hurt. I can't stress that. I know it's tough to understand, but I'm sure it's the salons, your, your flower shops, whatever.
It's, it's everything. And, and over the, the course of the weekend, as the Governor's Office reached out and, you know, discussions were had, I will say that, just even today, that I asked if there is any way that that could be the least burdening administratively to get that out the door as quick as possible. And City Manager Roloff was part of that conversation, if you want to add on to that.
Yeah, I think the, you know, I asked specifically about the enforcement part, Pat, and it was, it'll be the same as it was with the masking ordinance. So I think it's about people just complying. And, you know, we're not going to be knocking on doors Thursday morning just doing a head count. It's, you know, get your plans together. They, you know, I appreciate Jay, you know, he's going back. And Jay's going to be diligent about making sure that he's in compliance. Based on my observations, visiting his establishments, he's already at the, at the standard. It's pretty sad. Some of the other ones are going to be pushing back, but, you know, they have to take it seriously and they got to keep working on it. But the whole idea is, it goes back to everything we said earlier. Do it because it's the right thing, not because it's now mandated. Because that mandate could go wait next Monday. And we still have this issue that we showed up for today. So I think the idea was, yeah, there's an enforcement arm in the, in the ordinance, but it's the same as the mask. And nobody's been knocking on the tavern stores about that either. So I think that's, do your best to comply and work at it diligently.
And Pat, you and I can talk offline about what that looks like, what the Health Department's work related to the enforcement side of these things and how that'll play out.
Yeah, just keep in mind, everybody, nobody is interested in shutting down businesses. There is no gain from businesses being shut down. There really isn't. So, again, thanks for everybody that came today, put their best foot forward. Looks like we have some next steps. And see you soon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.